So we were having some computer problems. LaShawna, are we ready for the inspirational moment or should we circle back to it?
There we go.
I am beauty. I am brains. I am intelligent. I am smart. I am health. I am wealth.
Let's hear it.
Every morning up early and bright, I look in the mirror and I recite affirmations by mom and dad. I am beauty. I am brains. I am intelligent. I am smart. I am health. I am wealth. I am treasure. I am heart. I am talent. I'm ambition. I'm success. I am daring. I am capable. I am helping. I am sharing. I am caring. I am water. I am earth. I am air. I am light. I am peace. I am love. I am future. I am bright. I am girl. I am princess. I am woman. I am queen. I am strong. I am divine. I express God. I am me.
That was my inspiration to encourage our scholars as they're going back to school. And that young lady was three years old when she learned to recite that. And I just felt that should be very encouraging to our scholars going back. If we could all give them affirmation to installing them what they are instead of the negatives, we can promote the positives. So I hope that was some encouragement to some of our teachers and some of our parents and scholars. Let's provide some affirmation and be light into our scholars so we can weed out any negativity that may be coming their way. Thank you.
Thank you so much, LaShawna. That was lovely. Tim, superintendent's report. Dr. Hanson.
I'm just gonna say I am impressed and I'm jealous. Just a few items for my report this evening along with my community meetings there. We are getting ready to start the school year, so lots of meetings at this time. Board really enjoyed our board retreat last week as well as our cabinet retreat. We have a lot of construction items going on, so we've been meeting with our construction folks. And just real quick superintendent spotlight, we've had new Warren employee orientations each Wednesday of this month. Lots of great energy in this building. I'm so excited for our new Warren employees. We are going to do an opening day this year. We missed that last year due to COVID. It will be this Friday, something different that will happen this year. We are gonna do them in three separate sessions to accommodate for all the staff. Board, you will have those invitations in your email for Friday. If you're able to come, we'd love to have you. If you're not, we understand as well. And then a week from today, we welcome our students back into our buildings.
Thank you so much, Dr. Hanson. And so now we have board comments. Oh, we haven't done this in this way in a while. So Julie.
I just wanna say I enjoyed the retreat as well. There was a lot of, we had great presenters and it was just very nice. I just wanna welcome everybody back and wish you all a great beginning of the school year.
Yeah, I also wanna welcome you back for the school year. It's gonna be a great one, another great one. The young lady that was speaking up there during the inspirational period, outstanding, no question about it, very inspiring. I also went to the retreat and the retreat was outstanding. I had a lot of fun. We talked about a lot of great things and we're all better for it. And I can't wait for opening day. I'm gonna be at each one of those three sessions, so it's gonna be fun. Thanks.
Thank you, Howard. Terry?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the board retreat. It was really well put together. I really appreciated everyone who spoke. Also, I've been driving by the buildings. I just wanna give a shout out to all the teachers, the custodians, transportation, everyone who's been making our buildings, getting classrooms ready to welcome back our kids in a safe environment. So have a wonderful day and I'm glad you're here with us tonight.
LaShawna?
I generally give the report on.
The mic. I generally give the report on WAVE, but we have Ms. Brittany, our executive director, is here, so I will not steal that thunder of the awesome things that they are doing. I would just like to say that I am excited about the upcoming events at our Morehead Resource Center. They're having their back to school day, so look forward to that and getting out into the community and welcoming everyone back. Hope we have a safe return and wishing all our staff and teachers and scholars the best year that they can ask.
Thank you, Gloria.
Well, I would like to say hello, everyone, and I'm excited about getting back started this school year. And it's so nice to see all of you, all your happy faces out there. And you know, we, as I look back and reflect back, you know, I know we've had some rough times and it's not to say that we might not have some rough times ahead, but we are strong and we made it through our rough times. And I know whatever we have to go through, we will make it together and we will be successful. Even starting this year, just to give you an idea, my husband had a heart attack in May and I've been in the hospital with him the whole, May, the whole month of June, and he finally got out in July. And he's doing much better with home health services coming in, so I'm dealing with that. And then this week, my daughter was admitted into the hospital and she's been there all week and I've been there with her. But you know, I believe that I don't care if life gets tough for you, you know what? We have inner strength that will help us to keep on keeping on. And I just want everybody just to keep me in your prayers and we just need to pray for each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Gloria. I also enjoyed the school board retreat that we had and then the work session afterwards. I do think we got a lot of really good information and a lot of good stuff to talk about and think about in the future. I have participated at, well, I participated by sitting in the car while my son did his sophomore onboarding because he asked me not to go inside the high school with him. Yay. I did get to go in the high school for freshman onboarding though, and that was, we were actually in the very, very first session yesterday and that was really well done. It was good seeing student council there. It was good seeing teachers and staff and getting introductions and even with the construction in the last minute, what door we go in change, I think it went really, really well. I am excited, I'm gonna keep pushing the mic away and see what happens. Okay. I am excited that I was able to referee big robotics last weekend for the first time since March of 2020. My heart was full, I'm not gonna lie, being with those kids again, seeing them, although they were all new because they haven't gone in two years. Seeing friends that I volunteer with robotics with, it was just nice. It was nice to get back there and be able to do it. Morehead Central was generous enough to host us. You know, there were very strict rules as to how many people could attend. There were no spectators, so it was all streamed because there were students there. Everyone was masked, but it didn't matter. Being back was just so important and seeing those kids get to drive and have fun, it was really just an amazing experience. So I'm glad that we're to the point where those things are starting to happen again for our kids. Terry reminded me that I saw buses on the road today out there practicing their routes. So that was always, it's always that sign that fall is coming and school is starting because you see the yellow buses out there doing their thing. I have also seen athletics out there practicing in the mornings, some earlier than others. That's always very pleasant and the band has made do. I tell you, we are nothing if we are not flexible. They have moved over to what I always consider the visitors' football lot. I'm sure that is not what it is technically called, but they are over there and doing their thing there. And they are splitting with athletics and everyone is playing nice and friendly and they're doing their thing, so that's really great to see. And then I will be the advertisement for the e-community online health. We were actually in Nashville, Indiana, and my daughter developed an ear infection and getting to a doctor was not a real easy thing, so we used the online health portal that Warren employees have available to them for free and it worked out really well. And I will say there were a couple of issues. For some reason, that prescription didn't make it to the pharmacy. She was able to call and get it handled. They made sure that it got to the pharmacy that day and there were some escalation sort of things, but they really did take ownership and make sure that was done. So for our employees and those on our health plan, that was a really, really good option. So I would really encourage using that should that be the most appropriate thing for you. And with that, Terry, do we have any correspondence?
No, we do not.
Okay, and I don't either. So yellow cards.
We have no yellow cards.
Okay, that moves us to the consent agenda. This month's consent agenda consists of approval of the minutes, the finance report, payroll claim, claim register and electronic payments, year-to-date summary of fund balances, the human resources report and addendum, change orders, and that is it.
I would like to make a motion.
I second.
So I've got Terry making the motion and LaShawna seconding it. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we are ready for a vote. We haven't voted online for a while, so. There we go. It's popping up on our screens. It's always a good sign. There we go. And the, not the conflict of interest forum, but the consent agenda passed unanimously. So with that, it is time for WAVE and alumni updates with Ms. Silkworth. Oh, there she is. I knew you were here, I just didn't see you. Apologize.
Well, good evening, President Burke, Dr. Hanson and members of the board and community. Really excited to be here tonight to just give you guys some update on the Warren Arts and Education Foundation and the Alumni Association.
So a little bit about the Warren Arts and Education Foundation that some of you might be familiar with. We're really excited, really the direction that the Warren Arts and Education Foundation has taken its focus the past year and a half, two years. And so we are really focusing on, you know, fine arts, college and career readiness, academic enrichment experiences, and removing barriers to learning and support of the whole child. So I am gonna update you on some highlights from the past school year and then kinda share some exciting projects that we have for the upcoming school year. This past year, we changed our grant format to be so that teachers could submit those online and make it really easy for them. So every grant that we received last year that fell within our pillars, we were able to fund with those totaling to be 23 grants to make an impact of a little over $12,000 last year. Some of you may have seen on the website or on our social media page, a video that we put together on a grant that we received from the Molina Foundation. And so we received a grant of about 43,000 brand-new books last school year in the fall that we were able to distribute to students that were all brand-new. And then we also received an additional grant this last spring that included National Geographic magazines as well as new books that we put together with volunteers. So excited that we still have a lot of those left and we're actually using some tomorrow at the Morehead Community Resource Center event to give out to students. Some highlights from last year, just as far as partners in the community. One partnership that we had was with IU Health that we received a grant for, for partnering with the Reading Cadre to fund, to help with resources for our students. We received a $25,000 grant from PNC and that included providing every teacher at the Warren Early Childhood Center with Zoo Phonics curriculum kit that they were able to use last year as well as years ahead. And then included with that is a bag for each student with the curriculum as well as we have those bags put together for new students for this year too. So it's a great opportunity of something that our teachers are able to use for years to come for resources. We also wanted to make sure that we celebrated the great work of our educators and staff. And so one way that we are able to do that is we receive notes from students, teachers and as well as parents recognizing teachers last year, and it was really neat to see those. We were able to give every teacher that received a nomination, Amazon gift card or check, and then we put together those notes and handed those out to the teachers as well. And then we celebrated the end of the year at our golf outing this year. On June 15th, it was the perfect day and really neat to see the community come together. Couldn't have one last year, so excited to just celebrate the great work and just all the wonderful things that are happening in Warren. So we sold out our teams this year and we're able to raise over $30,000 for that event. Recently this week, we received a new performing arts trailer at the high school. It was delivered, so really excited to just see some community partners come together to provide that for our students. So that is something that they're gonna be able to use for years to come and hopefully make a statement at competitions and events as they bring that trailer. I would've put a picture, but I didn't have before I put this together. So hopefully, if you're able to go over to the parking lot, you are able to see that. We are going to be receiving a book vending machine at one of our schools and hopefully that's something that other elementary schools will wanna do as well, but excited to have that as kind of an incentive for students. They'll receive tokens throughout the year and be able to receive books and other things. We'll continue to do classroom grants and other grants that we receive from schools and teachers on how we can just kinda remove those barriers to learning and help make an impact. And then some of you may have gone to Tree Fest in the past, but kinda made a shift on a gala that we're gonna have this year in April to really celebrate the success of the 21-22 school year. And so that will be at the Marriott East this year. And so excited to have a date for that. And then we'll have our golf outing, of course, again in June of next year. So those are some highlights of the Warren Arts and Education Foundation. I'm really just excited to continue to make an impact in Warren Township and see what we can do with this school year. Also wanted to give everyone a quick update on the Alumni Association. So some of you may be aware, if you are alumni, that you had received emails or postcards asking to update your contact information. So over the past year, we've been working on that project to really build a database so that we can engage our alumni. And so excited to share that that project is complete. They are cleaning up that data now and then going forward, we will have the opportunity to share with them on a regular basis, not just on social media, but through, you know, email and other marketing opportunities, the great things that are happening and then ways that alumni can get involved. This year, we were able to award five students $1,000 scholarship and excited to hopefully, our goal is for next year, to have the opportunity to give up to $50,000 to students. So that is the goal that we are reaching for. With that database project that we've been working on, I've also been able to build relationships with contacts who are leading the class reunions. So I know many of those are happening within the next month that maybe even didn't get to happen last year. So that's been a really great opportunity. And then also excited to share that we'll be able to have a strong presence at Home Fest this year as well as the homecoming football game and engage alumni that way as well. I wanted to include on there just our website and social media. If that's something that you're interested in following along, we'd just encourage that. But you know, thank you again for letting me share some quick highlights of the impact that we're able to help make in the district and also appreciate the support of the district and you know, Dr. Hanson and LaShawna serving on that board as well. So happy to answer any questions that anyone has at this time.
I don't have any questions, but I do have an alumni address and name change, so.
That would be great.
I'll give this to you because I don't think she did it.
Yeah. That's perfect. Well, thank you again.
Thank you so much, Ms. Silkworth. We truly appreciate it. So we have green cards?
We have no green cards.
Okay. And so our next step then is Dr. Hanson and the much anticipated 2020-2021 Safe Reopening Plan.
Good evening, President Burke, members of the board and community. At this time, I'd like to share our safe opening plan for the 21-22 school year. As you know, we discussed this last week at our board retreat. We have had conversations internally with our WEA, our administrators. So we've sought a lot of input and we don't take these decisions lightly. So as we jump into this, you know, we always bring the board goal to you of decisions that we make. This particular board goal really focuses on the safety of our students and staff, so we wanna keep that in mind. Our strategic plan focuses investing in the whole child, and what I would say here is the whole individual because these decisions are impacting not only our students, but our staff. We are following local, state and national guidance. I have my weekly meetings with Marion County Public Health Department. We're monitoring the Marion County COVID-19 data that is particularly specific to our area. Kim Howard, our district lead on nursing, she meets with the Indiana Department of Health on a weekly basis and she shares that information with me. Obviously, the Centers for Disease Control and most recently, the American Academy of Pediatrics guidance. So let's just start with the hard one. Use of masks. Per federal mandate, all of our students and staff will be required to wear a mask while on our buses. So as soon as students board our buses, they will have to be masked. We will have masks available for students as we did last year, so if they forget theirs or don't have one, they'll be provided one. As they get off the bus, we are going to ask that they keep their masks on. So all students, staff and visitors will be required to wear a mask while they are inside our Warren schools. Some flexibility that we would like to provide this year because we know more about COVID is that we will allow some flexibility in the classroom when social distancing can be implemented and students are facing in the same direction. We certainly recognize that wearing a mask can inhibit instruction, both from a teaching perspective and a learning perspective. So while we want our kids back in our classrooms, we wanna make sure that they're in there safely. So we will allow our teachers some flexibility for themselves and for their students when those two things can occur. And do you wanna remind everyone that masks must cover the nose and the mouth to be most effective? Masks will be available to students, staff and visitors as needed. As I mentioned before, we'll have those in our front office areas. And right now, we are not going to require, our recommendation is not to require masks for outdoor activities. Before I move on with that, are there any questions from the board? I know we've talked about this extensively, but just wanna make sure. Any questions in that? So I'll ask myself a question. What about the vaccinated individual? So right now, we do not have the ability to identify students who have been vaccinated and we do not have the ability to identify staff that have been vaccinated. So this recommendation is for vaccinated and unvaccinated individuals. This will give us some time to identify a system for us to identify those individuals that have been vaccinated, but in the meantime, we're asking that this recommendation be for all individuals. Similar to last year, we're gonna ask all of our parents and caregivers and staff to screen their students and themselves prior to coming to school. Last year, just on a staff note, we asked them or required them to fill out a paper. We're not going to do that this year. We feel that our staff are in the habit of, hey, if I'm not feeling well and I have COVID-related symptoms, I should not go to work. We believe our parents will do the same for our students, but just a reminder to parents that if you, if your student is exhibiting COVID-like symptoms, please keep them home. Please contact your child's school and we can assist you with next steps. Just to add to that, if symptoms do become present at school in a student or a staff member, we will ask them to go home. I mentioned this earlier, social distancing of at least three feet will be implemented when practical and possible in our school environments. If you remember, last year it was six feet. New guidance is coming out, come out. We know more about COVID, particularly with our masks in place. We feel this is the appropriate safe distance. I'll call out the practical and possible. Our cafeterias and buses will be areas that, you know, it'll probably be two to three feet with that, but we feel confident that we can do that safely still. Hand washing and hand sanitizer, we will continue to emphasize that. Frequent hand washing will be required for all students and staff. We'll make sure all of our soap dispensers are filled on a frequent basis in that students have access to that. If it's not available, we have invested a lot of money into hand sanitizer, so we will have hand sanitizer in classrooms and common areas when hand washing isn't practical and possible. practical and possible. A change from last year. Last year, we turned off all of our water fountains. We did not allow staff or students to utilize those. This year, we're going to remain, those will remain on, but not for the traditional use of individual, you know, bending over to take a drink. We will be using those for refilling water bottles. I will share with you, and I think at Stony Brook, are we 100% on the? Thank you, Mr. Reedy. We have replaced all of the traditional water fountains at Stony Brook with water fill stations. So they have the mechanism for the water bottle. That is in our ESSER plan to replace them at all of our facilities. So that's going to take some time, but eventually we will get to that. Serving food, we're making some adjustments to how we're going to serve breakfast. This will start the Monday, August 3rd, 2nd, where students will be given a single container of their breakfast items as they enter the building. We feel that that's going to help expedite the food distribution. We hope that it'll increase students participating in our breakfast, and it takes a burden off of our teachers as well. We will continue to prepackage food in the serving line to avoid that buffet-style type You know, in all of our schools, we have community health network nurses. We're very fortunate to have a partnership with them. We will continue the process of providing care for students and staff that are not related to COVID. And then if we do have a COVID-related situation, all of our buildings will have a separate room for those individuals to be cared for. We anticipate we will have positive cases. In that situation, individuals who have a positive test for COVID will be required to isolate for 10 days. We will continue the use of contact tracing when we have a positive case of COVID. We will again provide seating charts to assist with that for bus, classroom, cafeteria. So that way, we know who was around the person who tested positive. Where we are including some vaccination exemptions here, if an individual is in close contact, but they are vaccinated and they are not displaying symptoms, they do not have to quarantine. Unvaccinated individuals that are close contacts will continue to be quarantined for 10 days. We support and promote COVID-19 testing. We have, we believe that the testing has been a positive way to identify a positive case. We will encourage to do that. We will provide testing sites on our website and links so that our families and community can access that. We believe COVID-19 vaccination is a way to protect against COVID-19. We will provide opportunities for vaccination. This is not something that we are forcing upon students or staff, but we do feel a responsibility to provide a convenient and safe location, because sometimes on the east side, it's not convenient for our families. So we've provided three vaccination clinics up to this point, one at the high school and two at Morehead Community Resource Center, very successful events. And we are working on fall dates right now to implement another round of vaccinations. I think it's important to note that similar to what we did last year, I think more informally, we were constantly reviewing and reevaluating our data. We're going to do that more publicly this year at each of our monthly board meetings. So I will bring information to you, or our team will bring information to you that will help us make a decision whether or not we need to increase mitigation efforts, or keep them the same, or lessen them. That's our hope. Communication, any significant changes to the plan will be communicated to students, families, and staff in a variety of ways. You know, we have a motto, 10 times 10 ways, and we will put them on all of our platforms. If you remember, Janine presented to us in the spring about Parent Square. So that'll be a great additional tool for us to communicate to all of our stakeholders in our schools that if changes are being made. I will continue my frequent calls, as well as our principals will do theirs as well. As you know, we are providing a virtual and online option for our families. We recognize that there are a variety of different needs or concerns or options. So we want to remind our families that these are still open. So if families are interested in the K4 virtual option, they need to complete the application online. They can also reach out to Mr. Butler at Hawthorne, where that K4 virtual staff will be hosted or located. And then for our fifth through 12th graders, they can reach out to Ms. Eaton at Renaissance with questions for our Warren Online Academy. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you might have before I ask for your approval.
Just clarification, you're going to continue everything on the website as far as in the schools, number of cases and everything, correct?
Yes, we will continue. Great question. We will continue to report our data to the Marion County Public Health Department, as well as post our positive cases and close contacts on our district website. The Marion County Public Health Department will do an analysis of our data, and they will give us feedback on specific community spread within each school building.
Dr. Hanson, what would be the protocol for vaccinated people that are in close contact when you're doing the contact tracing, collecting that information?
Yep. So I'll address the student one first and then staff. So the student one, we will contact students as we normally would. We would notify them that they were a close contact and ask them, if your student is vaccinated and not displaying symptoms, they do not have to go into quarantine. If we get to a point where we're collecting that information, we can cross-reference our close contacts with our vaccination list. Same thing for staff. Right now, in the spring of last year, we asked our staff to voluntarily provide their vaccination information for that specific reason. Because if they were a close contact, then they're not required to quarantine.
Thank you. And the parents will have to show their child's vaccination?
Card.
Card, yes.
If we get a refusal, like if the parent does not want to show that information, do we have something in place? Will that child automatically have to do the quarantine?
Yes.
That's the option.
Okay. With that, I will ask for your approval.
I'll make the motion.
Now second.
Mr. Darcy, do you have a question?
I did want to comment before we voted, and I just want to say, I want to say thank you for putting in all the effort that you put into with your staff to come up with what we've got here. You know, our ultimate goal remains the same as it was last year, and that is, you know, to get students and teachers and staff back in the school buildings full-time and, you know, to make sure that they're safe. And I think you've done that. I really do. I know what effort you've put into this thing. I've looked at it a number of different ways, and I really feel confident that we're doing the right thing for our kids and our staff.
We're not out of this yet. And, you know, we have to continue to work together. We're going to get some questions probably on this, but we have to work together to continue to provide what you just said.
I had a question as well. How will, so if a student has to be quarantined for 10 days, will we still be using kind of the mechanisms we used last year with work being sent home to them so they're not?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Russell on that one. Canvas?
Okay. Canvas is a great answer. Thank you. Are there any, sorry, are there any other points of discussion? Okay. We have a motion from Julie French and a second from Gloria Williams to accept the recommendations in the 2021-2022 Safe Opening Plan. And with no further discussion, we are ready for a vote. That was seconded by Gloria later. And it passed unanimously. Thank you so much. We will now move on to Mr. Russell, Ms. Fowler, and Ms. Storm. Who is?
Storm will be joining us by video.
Okay. That is a remarkably wise choice on her behalf. Oh, I'm sorry, and everyone else. So we're just.
And crew. And crew.
And crew. We will now have the Creston group as a whole come make their presentation. There we go.
President Burke, Dr. Hanson, members of the board, I know you guys had the, I'll say, fortune of already hearing from me regarding Creston. However, tonight is an opportunity for the, I brought stakeholders with me to describe the process and talk through the exciting news about Creston's new mascot moving forward. As mentioned, I think I heard Dr. Hanson say, Ms. Storm realized she lived three and a half hours away now. And making it to a 7:00 PM board meeting from three and a half hours away wasn't ideal. But in true, once a warrior, always a warrior fashion, she did submit a video of herself talking through the process so she could still participate. So what I'm going to do is play that video and get out of the way and let the team talk
Good evening. My name is Carrie Storm, and I am proud to have served as the previous Creston principal through June of this year. During my time at Creston, our team determined, along with the help of our district leadership and the Board of Education, that we would like to adopt a new mascot to represent our school. This process spanned several months, as we wanted to make sure we got the perspectives and voices of our students, their families, the community, and our staff. To begin, the Creston leadership team created a brief presentation that our teachers were then able to share with all Creston students during Core Connect class last spring. The presentation outlined the purpose of a school mascot, as well as our rationale for wanting to find a new one for Creston. When Creston first opened its doors in the 1960s, the mascot of our building was the Creston Indians, represented by the image of a headdress. We believe this mascot was originally selected, given the location of our school and the land that it sits on. Of course, here in Warren, one of the main values that we abide by is respect for diversity. When we think about the mascot of a school, it's important to be sure that it represents all groups and their histories in a unique way. No part of our name or mascot should be founded in a word or imagery that disrespects any particular culture or race of people. To take you back through the timeline that we followed for this process, it really started about a year ago. One year ago, we decided to make sure that our imagery in our building was representative of how proud we are of the Creston community. So we started using the large capital C rather than the traditional headdress that we had previously used. We then developed a timeline and got the approval from our district leaders to go through the process of engaging our students and community in the new mascot selection. Students were taught the history behind school mascots, as well as the importance of school mascots during their Core Connect classes. Then each student had the opportunity to contribute an idea to the brainstorming process with their Core Connect teacher. All teachers submitted several different ideas for the process, and then we were able to look at all of those suggestions to come up with the several of those that really stood out for this process. Then in May, staff, students, and the community of Creston had the opportunity to submit their feedback based on some of those final options on an online form. We are excited to go through this process that we started about a year ago to make sure that the new mascot at Creston represents our students, staff, and community with pride. I'm looking forward to seeing the future of this mascot at Creston, and we are very excited that our students will be able to engage in a process to help contribute their ideas to the logo and imagery that will come along with this new mascot. Thank you so much to the Creston staff, as well as our district leaders and the Board of Education for supporting us throughout this process. We're so excited to announce our new mascot today.
Hi. My name is Jennifer Fowler. I just wanted to thank the board and Dr. Hanson for this opportunity for us to present our new mascot. We are going to be the proud Cyclones this year. The Creston Cyclones. At this time, I want to invite either our student or some of my colleagues to discuss a little bit about their experiences with this process.
It's a lot of people.
It is a lot of people. So this is one of my students, Andrew Gudger, current sixth grader. And so we've asked him to be here tonight just to help represent. He's one of our students that voted on the process in the Core Connect class at the beginning of the day, as we've gone through this whole process. So really exciting, kind of as we've narrowed it down. And yeah, it was just a very good process as we got it going through. Do you have anything?
Andrew, is that your name? Is it Andrew?
Yes.
Can you tell us, why did you vote on that name?
The reason why I voted on Cyclones is because, for some reason, it reminded me of tornadoes, and I kind of liked them.
Great answer. Thank you. Is there anything else you want to tell us about the process?
I wanted to thank the school for taking out the time to make us like vote for a new mascot. And I didn't really know about mascots much until I like started, well, until the school started talking about it, basically. And they gave me and a couple of my friends and classmates to give us the opportunity to vote, or really the whole school to have the opportunity to vote. And I'm glad that the school that I'm going to be going to for sixth grade is going to be the Creston Cyclones.
Awesome. Yes. Thank you so much.
I don't like to give an opportunity up to talk. So I am Peggy O'Connell. I am now an eighth grade math teacher at Creston. And it was really, from a teacher's perspective, it was really a great opportunity for all of us to be able to revisit, you know, we were the Indians, you'd hear them cheering about the Indians. And teachers would kind of say, yeah, well, shouldn't we really be doing that? And glad to see that the district finally realized that we need to make this change. I too voted for Cyclones because I didn't like Spartans. And I really think that Cyclones kind of, you know, change things, make things, you know, a little bit different, makes us look at things in a different perspective. And hopefully, we're going to be doing that this year and in the future. So thank you for the board. Thank you for everybody letting us have this opportunity to make this change.
So we will continue this process this year of, now that we adopted the Cyclones as our new mascot, we are going to go through the cycle of actually looking at different logos to adopt. And we're going to invite students and staff and community members to be part of that process. So thank you so much.
We are asking for approval. So if there are any final questions before that, I'd be happy to answer them.
Do we have a motion to approve the new mascot?
I, LaShawna Triplett, so move that we approve the Cyclone mascot for Creston.
I second the motion.
So LaShawna made the motion, and Gloria seconded it. Is there any discussion or questions for Mr. Russell? Hearing and seeing none, we will go to a vote. Hearing and seeing none, we will go to a vote. And it passes unanimously. I am happy to announce that we are now the proud recipients, I guess, of the Creston Cyclones. Thank you so much. And with that, we have a familiar face that is back with us. Quill, I would just like to say how absolutely thrilled I am to see you. It's wonderful to have you back. Thank you.
Good afternoon, President of the Board, Superintendent Hanson, and the board members. Hello, I'm so glad to be back, so glad to be back. So I'm glad that you all happen to have me back, too. I'm going to be talking about the meal prices and paid lunch equity that we need to present to you so that we can get your approval for our lunch prices for the 21-22 school year. And so this first came about because the, we received a letter from the Department of Education. Every month, they send out a newsletter stating different changes and things that may happen throughout the year. One of the ones that came up was the need for the pricing to change. And this came about because across the nation, the adult meal prices was pretty much what subsidized the program for the students to eat free, because free lunches was available across the nation for everybody, all right? So for the 2021 academic school year, all schools will be able to run Seamless Summer Option, which was the topic of discussion, because it's different from what we normally run, which is the NSLP, National School Lunch Program. And there was some concern as to whether or not we would lose our CEP eligibility on this, and I'll talk about that as well. So feeding service, under the Summer Feeding Service Plan, because the meal pattern for SSO is identical to that of NSLP, and includes age groups, increased portion sizes of certain items, whole grains, and requirement to serve both fruits and vegetables at lunch. So therefore, it's the same similar program as what the NSLP is, but there's a big difference as far as the reimbursement rate is concerned, okay? So that will happen in April. So in May, they came out with what they wanted everybody in the nation to at least charge for the adult meal patterns. You can see at the bottom, breakfast is going to be $2.50. That's the minimum requirement that the Department of Education is saying it has to be. And then $4.57, which rounds up to the nearest nickel, which is $4.60. Those are the nationwide minimum standards for a meal, an adult meal. Any questions on that?
Do you know what our current prices are?
I will get to that. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, sorry.
No, you're fine. So in July of this year, myself, Marcus, and my team, we all had a Zoom call with the state Department of Education representative to find out exactly how would this impact us here at Warren when it comes to our meal pricing and our student eligibility to make sure that we keep our CEP? Because when it first rolled out, they explained to us that the SSO program, the Seamless Summer Option, would take away our CEP eligibility if we chose to do that. Since we have two years left on our program, that was a big concern for us. However, after talking with the state representative, they informed us that that's not the case. We can keep our CEP eligibility, which is a huge plus for us, because that continues to have all of our kids eat free even after this school year. Some of the other things that we can do, you can see on the bottom, virtual meals will resume as normal providing breakfast and lunch to any students who are not in person, which is total opposite of what the previous NSLP guidance has been, because virtual programs were never really a case until COVID came around, so the government is deciding to keep that. But a big change is that weekend meals are not allowed. So we can only serve meals to virtual students, pretty much any kids, Monday through Friday. We cannot do the Saturday, Sunday meal guidance like we used to. Another thing, so on October 1st, there are two major changes for the meal pattern, which means that all grains must be 100% whole grain. Under the waivers over the past year, we were able to provide 50% whole grain and 50% enriched, which means like our pizza dough and some of our other options were more flavorful than what the kids like. However, we have to go back to the, not so tasteful, so there's no kids in here, okay? Pizza crust. But we are finding that because of the fact that we're having to go back to it, thankfully, the supply hasn't been there, so we can continue to use the enriched, which is what the kids like. So as long as the supply is not there for the 100% grains, we are allowed to go ahead and continue to do the enriched. So we're hoping that that supply or demand keeps going the way it is. And then another big change is that we can't offer 1% milk anymore. We have to provide fat-free, which is a big difference for kids, big difference for kids. The only way we could do that is if we applied for a waiver, but the state has said that they are more than likely not going to grant us that waiver.
That's just for the flavored milk, though, correct?
For milk, for whole and, I mean, should say white and flavored. They have to both be fat-free. Oh, we know.
I helped hand out those milks. They didn't want them.
So on the next slide, you'll see that what we're proposing, or actually, we'll see what we do have currently in the system, because what we did was we went ahead and updated all the pricing over the summer to what the minimums should be according to the state standard, and also what we're recommending they are to be according to what we would offer here at Warren. So you see on the far-left-hand side column, we got our adult lunches, and the next column, next to that says our current price, which is what the state says we have to be, is $4.60. We're recommending $4.75. And you'll see on all of our price points in our proposed price column is in quarter cents increments. The reason being is from my past experiences in food services, you want to reduce the amount of change that you hand back in any type of transactional activity. So if we go to quarter cent increments, that will help us doing that. So what we did was, we looked at all of our prices across the board and rounded them up or down while being compliant with what the state mandates for us to be within. So on our adult lunches, instead of doing the $4.60, we would suggest $4.75. For adult breakfast, we're staying the same at the state minimum of $2.50. And then for all the others, there's no really state guidance on the snacks and offerings, except for the student entree pricing. At the bottom of $3.45, we recommend $3.50 on that. And all the others, like I said, went up or down to the nearest quarter cent increment. Do we have any questions on pricing?
I just wanted to make a comment, and I know this is far-fetched, but if our students don't drink the milk, and if we can show that all of this milk is being disposed of, which is just a waste, and if we were able to document that, you know, do you think that we could present that to the state where they would reconsider? Because we do want nourishment for our children.
Great question, great question. My team and I have strongly considered that. We've even reached out to our other Chartwell's accounts across the state. In fact, last Tuesday or Wednesday, I had 30 of my fellow peers here, so there's 30 accounts in the state of Indiana, and we were all here, and we brought this discussion up as well. We all even tried to see if we would all be able to submit for the waiver for that, and the response came back that regardless of what we decided to do as a company, as Chartwells, the state more likely still would not approve that because it's a nationwide thing. So we did even consider, I mean, we have us, Pike, South Bend, Lafayette, Richmond, all of us were sitting here in a room, and we even considered that as an option, as trying to say, hey, this is what we would like to do. We even contacted Prairie Farms, our vendor, and because they have the supply to, or the ability to supply that milk, it's far-fetched that we can try it. But that is an option that we are still considering and looking into.
Because you never know until you try.
That is correct, ma'am.
You know, the worst they can say is no.
Correct.
So.
Yes, ma'am.
Worth trying.
So we are looking into that.
I do have a question. For clarity, you said our CPE program, you still have two more years left?
CEP, yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, yes.
Community Eligibility Program?
Program, yes. So if these prices increase, then will you reapply for that to cover our families that can't afford?
Okay, great question. So these prices only impact our adult pricing and the extra entrees that kids get. This does not impact the student meal rates at all. Students are still free, whether we go, whether we go to the current pricing that we have to meet or not. That doesn't affect or impact our student meals pricing at all. Because the students all eat for free regardless.
Thank you for that clarity, because if we have parents listening, they may think, oh, my gosh, I have to pay this price.
Okay, no. Good question. So that's the more likely for an adult, if they choose to eat with their child in the school, or for the teachers. That's what this adult meal pricing goes to. So thank you for asking that. All right. And does anybody else have any questions for anything else? Again, thank you, guys, for, yes, ma'am. High school or middle school students purchasing second additional meals. So every child gets one meal free. This comes into play when we have high school and middle school students, like I was a football player from Texas. These meal portion sizes, they're great for your average child, but for me going out to play football, I'm going to eat two or three more meals, so I have to pay for those extra entrees.
I do have one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
Going back to your slide where you're not able to provide weekend meals, have you, are we going to try to figure out how to supplement that? Because we know sometimes those weekend meals gets our kids through to Monday, so especially for our, like, weekend evento families. So will we try to partner with community partners, or are we able to provide backpacks for over the weekend with any meals?
So great question. Everything that I presented is stuff that's supplied for or reimbursed by the state. What Warren decides to do, or we decide to do as a food department, we can go above and beyond that. We just can't claim that as reimbursement. So that's a great question.
I just wanted to say, as someone who's spent a lot of years collecting cash, going to quarters is a really, really, really good idea.
I'm right there with you.
Nickels are really heavy. If you've never had to go get a whole bunch, then they're remarkably heavy coins. And as someone who has spent many, many years, sorry, Matt, this will soon become your problem, focused on the CEP program and wanting to make sure that we have that, I wanted to thank you for doing the legwork to make sure that we maintain our community eligibility throughout this.
Could you just describe for those listening about the snacks and the suppers, too, just so people know?
When you say describe, how would you?
Just so they know that, what they get when our kids are at our district. So they get suppers when they are here late.
Okay, yes, ma'am, so certainly. So the, anything that gets reimbursed from the state perspective is breakfast and lunch. Those are the two standard programs, or two standard meal entrees that we can provide to kids that are totally free. Now, under another program, which is a CACFP program, we're allowed to provide snacks and suppers. Now snacks have to be provided within the last hour of a school activity or the school day, and then suppers have to be, or can be provided to any student that's participating in an enrichment activity. Enrichment activity means an activity that's after school that they have to do in the building in and of itself, whether it be football, basketball, track, whatever. They have to be in that, enrolled in that activity, robotics, whatever, at the school. They can't leave the building like they were before in the past, or like last year. Everything now has to be in the building, but all those are free, or reimbursed, I should say. Correct, yes, that's correct, yes, ma'am. So all the families or all the students get those for free. The state reimburses Warren Township, not Chartwell's, the state reimburses Warren Township for those activities or for those meals. So the more students that we have participating in any activity, whether it be, like I said, from chess club all the way down to football, whatever sports they're in, all those meals can be claimed and submitted to the state, and the state will pay for reimbursing Warren for those, providing those meals.
Do I have a motion to accept the new pricing structure?
LaShawna Triplett moved that we accept the new adult pricing structure.
I'll second it.
So I've got LaShawna having made the motion, and Julie having seconded it. Is there any other discussions or questions?
Just had to make a comment, because I am, I'm really disappointed that we're not, you know, it's not our fault, but that we're not able to provide foods to kids' families or foods to kids who really need it over the weekends. I used to be, you know, in the district, and I remember, I remember so many times that kids were sort of anxious when the end of the day on Friday came around, because all they knew they were going to do during the weekend, Saturday and Sunday, was forge over the weekend, trying to find something to eat. You know, the meals that we served the kids here was probably the most, those kids who I had experience with was probably the best meals they were going to get that week. And if there was nothing to find over the weekend, of course, like I said, they're scrounging, they're forging, they're trying to find whatever they can get their hands on. And then when they come into the classroom or come into the building on that Monday, you could hear a pin drop where they were at as they were eating that meal. That was the best they had had, you know? And of course, not all kids are like that, but there were, there is a group of kids out there that when the weekend comes around, they're trying to find something to eat. That's their struggle. And so it's just depressing and really made me feel bad that we've got a situation now where some of those kids who used to get those meals over the weekends will not be doing that. So I just wanted to throw that out there, because a lot of, you know, I look around and, you know, I don't think any of us are having problems with finding something to eat, a decent meal on the weekend, but there are some kids out there that are really struggling, and it's just depressing to hear that that's going to go away.
We still do the backpacks for K through four?
I'm not familiar with what you mean, say the backpacks for K through four?
Sacks.
Gleaners.
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 That is still, we do still have gleaners through Morehead. They hand out meals through there, and through Sunny Day, I believe. Now, I'm sorry, go ahead, ma'am. Yeah, certainly. So we can partly, certainly partner with Morehead Community Resource Center to make that happen. That's certainly not out of our realm of capabilities.
I'd like to just also, in the same realm of this stuff, thank our extracurricular activities, whether it's sports, or I know our choir and our bands have meals that they provide kids when they're there a long time. I just remember one child, we would have pizza for the kids during all-day practices that was just provided for them, and we'd send them out, and they'd get to go get one piece, and then they'd get to come back for a second piece, and then we'd let them come back and get as many as they wanted. And one young man came back and was just piling his plate high, and another kid asked him and said, why are you getting so many pieces of pizza? And he said, I'm not going to get anything else this weekend, I'm getting this now. So I just want to thank our extracurricular activities that think about our kids and making sure when they have them, they can provide that as well.
Hearing and seeing no other discussion, we will go to a vote. Well, before you step down, again, good to have you back. Thank you so much for rejoining us. And the changes in meal and à la carte pricing passed. So we have a grand total of zero discussion items on the agenda, and so because of that, we are going to move to closing comments. I know, it's just, Terry, up to you.
A lot of changes happening today. As we get ready for school to start next week, I know the safety of our staff and our students are really at our heart, but I just really want to say, Dr. Hanson, thank you for you and your team putting the guidelines out, knowing that we're going to be looking at those every month. But I just want to wish everybody a great start to a school year and have a wonderful evening.
I will piggyback off of what Terry said, and I just want to say to all of our teachers and staff, I'm excited that our scholars are getting back. You are the gatekeepers to helping everyone identify those red flags that are going on with our scholars. And just keep in mind, as we talk about hunger, it is a big problem in our city, especially on the east side. So if you do see a child, maybe in the morning, that's having behaviors, kind of try to think, you know, what's causing that early behavior, and get to support, let's wrap our support around our scholars, and just continue to love on our babies so they can excel to their highest abilities. Thank you all for what you do.
I would like to say- I would like to say, I think we're getting off to a great start. And I'm a positive thinker, so I believe we're going to have a great year. And I hope that all of you join in with me and be positive thinkers, you know? Because, you know, someone said, so as a man thinketh, so is he. So I would like to say, thank you all for coming out. And let's all continue to work together to make Warren to continue to be great. And I would like to also thank our superintendent and his administrative team and all the teachers. And not just the teachers, but everyone that's working here in Warren. You know, it takes all of us working together. You know, someone said it takes a whole village to raise a child. So we are a village, and we just thank God for all of us working together. And I think if we continue to work together, we will continue to have a great year. Thank you. Enjoy the rest of your evening.
I'd just like to thank you all for coming tonight, and I hope you have a wonderful start to your school year.
Ditto. We're getting off to a real good start, and I'm really excited about how this upcoming year looks.
The same as everyone else. I think we're all excited to have students back in buildings in a way that is safe. Excited to have extracurriculars look more normal this year. And excited to see all the great and wonderful things Warren Township will be doing. I am sure that the December meeting and the June meeting will once again be nice and celebratory, and we will get to see all of the great work that's going on. So thank, oh, excuse me, thank you for your time, and with that, we will call the meeting adjourned. I know, it really.